Okay, it's 6:30, all the meetings are ordered. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from August 30.
So I have some corrections from Amy, moving a comma, restelling the holidays, sorry, Lyle. Communications from Dummerston and Clark.
Yeah, I just thought it should reflect a little bit more info so that somebody reading it might go, you know, they wouldn't understand.
Sounds good.
And then the other thing was to just changing, Susannah Friedman who had her baby, changing that to maternity leave.
Okay.
And then I see we also need to have the outcome of our vote.
Yes, I apologize for that, I noticed that when I was printing off the minutes and went, huh, how'd that happen? So I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Wait a minute.
Well, we need to add the Michael, the vote about Michael.
The approval of minutes with the changes.
Which meeting is this?
This is the minutes, the 30th.
The 30th.
I know, which meeting was that? We had two in a row.
It was the 30th.
It was two weeks ago, no, the time before that, we had two right after each other, I mean, those have already been approved.
No, no, this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had a Wednesday, a Thursday meeting.
This was a regular meeting, the first day of school, it was a regular, wow.
First day of school.
So we need to say, on a motion made by Dan Armendo, segmented by Christine and Mailer, and voted two to one, or actually it was, it was a tie vote. And then, so Christine, you had to bow out because you're chair and that's what the VSA said was the protocol.
Okay. Okay.
So it was two to one for Michael.
Did she vote?
No.
A real one? She didn't vote ahead?
She did, but it was a tie, two to two.
Well, yes, yeah. All right, we'll add those to the minutes.
I'm not sure where to bring this up, but because this is the minutes, and I think it ought to, well, I guess it'll go in tonight's minutes, but actually, I know when to bring it up. I'll bring it up in the Act 46, or section, sorry.
Okay. Any other changes?
So you have spoken to Sam.
I have spoken to Sam, yes.
Can I ask a question about the minutes real quick?
Of course you can.
Uh, did you guys vote in executive session or didn't you vote in executive session?
No, not voted out, so you can't vote in executive session.
Okay, I was. That's fine, that's good, thank you.
We just discussed it.
It was unclear. I also saw the minutes online and was confused, but similar.
Five pounds.
That's okay, I'm not saying it to be critical.
So.
I'll move, did somebody move it forward or?
No, no one moved it forward.
I'll say I'll move with changes.
Any second?
Can I second my own minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll second it.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Christina.
All in favor of approving the minutes with the changes discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any needs or extensions?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Next on the agenda is communications, and I passed out a letter from Sam, who wasn't able to be here right at 6:30. Just questioning that the minutes didn't reflect what we just talked about, the motion or the vote for Michael from on board. And, I think the only communications other than the communications we all received from the Energy Committee, and then Dan has this energy.
Can we get something from the Energy Committee?
It was.
This morning.
To all of us.
I saw Dan.
Something from Dan, but I thought it came to all of us from.
I did not get it.
Yeah, I don't think I did either.
I apologize for that. Those, um, two people from the Energy Committee requesting energy data.
Oh. I did see that.
Okay, so yeah, that was like last week.
Oh.
Any other communications?
Oh, I thought there was one that came from Dick to Amy, maybe there wasn't.
I didn't really feel that that was addressed to the board, I thought it was more of a criticism of me personally, so.
I mean, that seemed like it was a Act 46 study committee issue.
Yeah.
The way I read it.
I don't know, that's, I guess we'll talk about that in the Act 46 session because I think it's our voting member and I think we have a responsibility to discuss that, so.
Bring it up with Act 46. So, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting that Lyle asked if we could move our presentation up after we approved the warrants so that our visitors can sit down a little early. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
So, we have some visitors in the audience. Any special things that?
Um, you know, I can probably comment at the end, I don't have any pressing to say right now.
Okay. The warrants. So, I need approval, I mean, I need a motion to approve the warrants.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor of approving the warrants for 141,984 cents, please say aye.
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 Any needs or extensions? Nope.
So, thank you for having us here this evening. I'd like to introduce Nancy Johnston, who is the BUHS School Improvement Coordinator, and I'm Steve Perrin, the principal of Broward Ridge High School. And I want to talk to you a little bit about proficiency-based learning and how it's changing the way we do business at the high school. And then we'll talk a little bit about how that change will kind of affect us kindergarten through 12th grade in the upcoming years. I would not be honest if I said I knew every answer with this, it's a very complex process and we've taken a long time to study it. And so along the way, feel free to ask questions, and let's roll. So, we at the high school have been a member of something called the League of Innovative Schools, and that's a multi-state consortium that encompasses all of the New England states. And they really have two missions. Their first mission is to increase personalization of learning for students. And their second mission is to help schools understand and move towards a proficiency-based model. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means in a while. As part of that, we work with the Great Schools Partnership, which is a consortium out of Maine. And several states in Vermont were given a pretty generous grant to spend some time, considerable professional development time, to send a team from the district, from the supervisory union, to a series of meetings. And those meetings were two back-to-back meetings every month for a year, which for a school, that's a huge commitment of time and that's a huge commitment of personnel. And so we assembled a team composed of high school representatives, career center, middle school, and folks from Putney as well, elementary. So we wanted to make sure we had, you know, the wide swath of representation. And we spent a lot of time looking at this. Part of the reason we had the urgency was Act 77. That was passed a few years ago, and Act 77 says that beginning with the class of 2020, which are this year's ninth graders, that students will graduate with what they call a proficiency-based program. And so we're starting to do that now. Act 77 also includes personal learning plans and a few other nuggets of information as well, but we're, tonight we're talking about proficiency. So we've actually studied this for four years, in a very amorphous nebulous way. And then for the past two years, we've been doing some very specific preparatory work, getting ready for rolling out the beginning stages now. It's not fully formed. Right now, what we're focusing on, we're focusing on classroom instruction, and we're focusing on how do we report out results to parents and families. That is going to be our mantra for a few years. As this kind of matures and middle schools begin to develop proficiency models and that begins to move further down, and we'll talk, Lyle will talk more about elementary work later, we'll be able to kind of move towards a fully realized proficiency education model, which is a little bit different than what we all grew up with, because we all grew up with grades and we all grew up with As, Bs, and Cs, or As and 90s. Proficiency is a little bit different in how it reports, but it's also different in how it will assess, so. Right now for this year, what we're looking at is we're focusing in the classroom. Because one of the things that we learned when we did this work with the grant was that a proficiency-based system in any school is going to succeed or fail in the classroom. So we could go out and do all of the public outreach we wanted to do, we could go out and do all of the planning that we wanted to do, but if we didn't keep our eye on the biggest prize, which is classroom instruction, we weren't going to get anywhere we needed to go. So for this year and for next year, we're going to be looking at specific practices in the classroom. One of those is to have what we call public transparent expectations. We've all had the experience, I could tell you a real weepy story about college for me, but we all had the experience where we've gotten a grade back and it's had a grade of C+ or B and nothing else on it. And as a learner, that's really hard because you don't know what that means. Likewise, for a college getting a transcript for a student, if that transcript says they got an 85 in biology, well, what does that mean? Does that mean they understood 85% of the information? Did the teacher have participation grade work in there? So what if one teacher at one school had 10% participation, another one had 30%? So that whole number becomes kind of nebulous. Granted, we can all agree that somebody gets a 95 is probably doing better than a person that gets a 75, but we want to make sure that we're communicating transparently what that grade really realizes. Can we pass out the principles? So one of the documents that the Great Schools Partnership gave us was something called the 10 Principles of Proficiency-Based Learning. They were not on stone tablets, but it was close. What we did is we presented that to the BUHS board. And they looked at it very politely and they looked at us and they said, you know, this is nothing but educational jargon. So we set out to kind of take that jargon-laden document, and this is our attempt, and it's a pretty good attempt, at making it plain speed. This is what we share with families, this is what we share with students. And for this year, we're focusing on a few things. We're focusing this year on the idea of separating out reporting of academics from habits of work. That's very important to us this year. And we're also working on how do we report habits of work. So we hear employers talk a lot about soft skills that students need, you know, and when we have meetings with Wyndham Workforce Development Groups and Brattleburg Development, they talk a lot about, well, what about the soft skills? And so our habits of work is a pretty, pretty new attempt for us to kind of document and really kind of talk about what those soft skills are. You know, how do you, how do you play with others? We call it collaboration. How do you complete your work? How do you behave? How do you participate? And that's not every soft skill that an employer wants, but it's a decent start for a high school student to kind of get objective feedback, or at least more objective than saying behave, getting objective feedback on how they're working in a classroom. Another big part of it is this year, we are giving students multiple opportunities to retake things. That isn't to say a student can't fail a course. But we do believe that a student should have multiple opportunities to prove that they can do something. I was not a believer in that when I was a high school teacher. I really kind of thought, well, they gave you the test, you failed, let's move on. But somebody pointed out to me that there's a lot of times as adults where we get retakes. We get a chance to do things over. The most common one is right down the street, if you fail your driving test, you get a chance to take your driver's test again. If you do badly on the SAT, you get a chance to take the SATs again. So one of the things that we're doing this year is we're saying, and this has been a tough conversation, but we're saying that if a student can say, it's not a free, give me a retake tomorrow, it's, well, what are you going to do to show me you're ready for the retake? So a student comes along, they do really poorly on a test, they sit down with the teacher and say, I'd like a retake. The teacher can look and say, well, I'm looking at all the assignments that we had in this unit, you didn't do any of those. So how about if you go and do all of those assignments, let me grade those, and we'll talk about a retake? Or why don't you sit down with me, we'll go over this test you did poorly on, and then we'll talk about doing a retake. So it's not a free pass, and that was one of the things that our teachers were very worried about. Am I going to have to write 18 versions of the same unit test? The answer is no. Because we do want to make sure that the students have some investment in the process, so it's not just carte blanche, every day come in and take a retake. You know, teachers in each department has set up their specific requirements that they'll need, that their students will need to do in order to qualify a retake. We talked about having a school-wide retake policy, and then we realized that what our teacher would want to see is very different from what an English teacher would want to see and different from what a science teacher would want to see. So we kind of say, well, we're going to let departments kind of have their own departmental policy. The other piece is we're reinvesting ourselves in our PLP process. This year, for the second year, every student that takes a collegiate high school course, a dual credit course, and uses a Vermont voucher is required to have a personal learning plan and file with us. You know, personal learning plans, I'm not sure how they've rolled out at Dummerston. We've had challenges at the high school, getting students to kind of understand why they're great and why they work really well. Oddly enough, the people that believe in them the most are the seniors who didn't do that. Because when they talk about, you know, we rolled them out to a group of seniors and said, what do you think of this idea? And they all looked at that, you know, and we had things like, what did you do for extracurriculars? What courses did you pass? What are some exemplars of your work in high school? The seniors all looked at that and said, well, where was that when I was writing my college essay? And so that's kind of been our carrot, is this is a tool that you can use as you're reflecting back on your high school and middle school career. Here's where you can talk about growth, here's where you can talk about things you've done. So as I talked about, habits of work, you know, highly specific areas, behavior, collaboration, participation, and work completion. I think we all agree that's not an exhaustive list of what we'd like students to do, but it's a start for us. We are requiring that our teachers report it every two weeks, so every 10 school days. And the form, we have that form, the form allows a student to actually give their own perception of their habits of work and then also let the teacher kind of compare. And so hopefully, that leads to a conversation between the teacher and the student. You know, we've just started this this year, and a few teachers have said to me that this has been very useful when they're sitting down with a student who's on a 504, or an EST plan, or an IEP, because they can actually use this to have the conversation with the student. The dream would be that we'd be able to tie this to IEP goals as well, but we're not there yet. For this semester, habits of work is just getting reported out. So when a student gets a report card, they're going to have their grade, they're going to have their habits of work. Beginning next semester, we're going to tie habits of work to co-curricular eligibility. So we want to make sure that when our students, you know, who are great in the play, great on the field, that their habits of work match in the classroom. The other thing that people don't think about that we want to do is, what about that student who can't quite make the academic grade for being eligible for that sport, but their habits of work are exemplary? So we're trying to come up with a way that we can actually have a habit of work help a student who is really putting forth the effort, who's not there right now, at least for that two-week period, to kind of let them participate and let them be a part of a team. We talked about starting that this fall, but frankly, I wanted to make sure that the teachers were comfortable and we had some consistency with how we were reporting habits of work before we tied it to something that, you know, was fairly high stakes for students. So we wanted to give them a chance to get used to it. So where this all starts, the big, big, big picture, is what is called transferable skills. And this is something that the state of Vermont developed, and Nancy's going to distribute that as well. This is not something that we were required to use. But we were required to come up with what we thought the important transferable skills for students were. And so what we did in June of 2015 is as a faculty, we agreed to adopt these as our transferable skills. So these are the skills that students that graduate from BUHS need to demonstrate, and they're the ones in the gray box. So those are what we call graduation proficiencies. Those are all tied to specific things that students do in courses. So the first one there, clear and effective communication. You can imagine ways that a student could have a document or an assignment that they complete in their class that shows that they can clearly and effectively communicate. Some of them, I'll be honest, like if you look on the backside, some of them are very nebulous and, like, if you look under responsible and involved citizenship. C, demonstrate ethical behavior and the moral courage to sustain that. We're wrestling with that one, because frankly, we've tried to figure out, and we all know moral courage, we all know ethical behavior, but we're really having trouble coming up with a way to kind of assess that. It's almost one of those things that I know what it looks like when it's not there, but we don't want to evaluate students on what they're not doing, we want to evaluate them on what they are doing. And so we've all kind of agreed as a faculty that we're going to kind of like put that expectation on the, not that we don't want our students to be ethical, but we're not going to figure out how to assess that right away. So, let's keep rolling. So within each of those transferable skills, you kind of imagine that those are the big, big umbrella. Within those, each department has specific content indicators. So for example, in science, there are certain content skills, you know, whether it be earth science, biology, physics, or chemistry. There's certain content that we ask students to do. Within that content, there's certain skills that we ask them to do. For example, we ask them to do a lab, which is inquiry, which is problem solving. But then we also ask them to somehow document their work, and that's effective communication. So our teachers for the past two years have been working hard to develop ways to link what they do in their classroom with those content indicators and with skill. And I know I'm getting jargon, so stop me if you get too jargon-y. Basically, we want to make sure that students can, we know what they're doing and what they've learned. And that's very important to us. Which is a little bit different from saying, well, I'm going to teach this curriculum that I've taught for 20 years. So it is a bit of a sea change for teachers, because they have to say, okay, how do I know, not how do I know that I've taught it, but how do I know they've learned it? And that's where that assessment piece becomes really important for us. And that, you know, that's a difficult transition to make. It's probably even harder than recording a habits of work rate every two weeks. So this is a sample that none of you can read unless you have really good eyesight. But basically, what it does, and this is a math rubric, this is a math standard, and basically, this says, reason quantitatively and use units to solve problems. That seems pretty, pretty important. And then they've kind of said they're beginning developing, meeting the standard, and exceeding the standard. As the student demonstrates one level, they'll be told that's where they are right now. So, you know, kind of as a point of comparison, I can identify appropriate units in a problem, that's beginning. Over here, I can do unit analysis to determine appropriate problem-solving techniques. So there's a real, there's a continuum that goes across here. The other thing that each department's done is they've said, here's number and quantity modeling, and these are the transferable skills that it meets, the document you have in your hand. So they've linked what they're doing in their classroom, what they're assessing with a transferable skill that we're asking students to do to graduate.
Can you read a couple of those transferable skills?
Sure. So this one says, if a student meets the standard, they have met the following transferable skill. And it's 1B, use evidence and logic appropriately in communication. If they exceed the standard, in this particular situation, it's saying that they've developed the ability to frame questions, make predictions, and design data collection and analysis strategies. So in one case, you know, using evidence and logic appropriately, that's, these are both important. But if the student exceeded the standard, they're saying they're doing way more than that. Almost, almost that they're taking the initiative to advance their education by themselves. Which is kind of what we would like them to do. Another sample comes from English and is probably, well, it's a little easier. What they've really done is, this is a writing one, and there are indicators that to write arguments to support a claim and analysis topic or text using valid reasoning and relevant and sufficient evidence. And then basically, they've chosen a different thing, they're saying does not meet the standard partially meets and exceeds. So every department has been allowed to kind of craft their own. A couple of things we said they could not do, we said they could not use what are called frequency words. So they couldn't say they sometime do this, or they frequently do this. Because as we went through our seminar with Great Schools Partnership, it's hard to define sometimes and it's hard to define frequently. How much is frequently? Is it one out of two times? Is it three out of four times? And so we've kind of gotten away from using frequency terms, which a lot of other rubrics do. But, and then they've just kind of put down the letter of their transferable skill, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if you have a student who is taking charge of their own learning, how is the high school supporting that?
Ah, that's a great question. So a couple of things. One thing that we do is, we, students often take outside courses now, they do that already. So they'll go to Marlboro College, they'll take a course there that we don't offer, and we'll give them credit for that. Some students do independent studies in various topics, like for example, we have a student right now who's doing independent study in Korean, she's actually working with our Chinese teacher who can speak Korean. And the challenge down the road is going to be, once this is a fully fledged, fleshed-out model, is that as a student is doing that, choosing that flexible pathway, what they're going to need to figure out with the department heads' help, but mostly on their own, is how does what they're doing meet these content standards? And how is that going to be assessed? That's, that's a tough, that's a tough one.
And I'm speaking as a parent right now, I mean, the last two summers I've tried to get, my youngest son is very interested in his education and we've been shut down and told no when we've offered, you know, pursued a course. And they really had, I think the frustrating thing that I've found as a parent is that, and I recognize that there's an evolution into the process
Sure.
with the staff and everything, but there really is no feedback from the department heads on what would be an appropriate course for the student. So, you know, looking ahead, that would be really nice to have that kind of stuff, you know, because we were sort of left hanging about a geometry class, so.
Sure, I can talk to you more about that, obviously not here, but.
Yeah.
That, you know, and that's, that's one of the challenges though, is, you know, flexible pathways are so new and these, this year's ninth graders are the first people to really use that. Another flexible pathway that a lot of students are using is, you know, they're using dual credit courses, that's another flexible pathway. Some of our students are using a high school completion program. In some cases, they're co-enroll, they're doing some of their work at the high school, they're doing some of their work in the community. Community-based learning is another one, we grant English credit for community-based learning. But yeah, it's a, you know, it's a real balancing act, for lack of a better word, because you do want to allow that flexible pathway. because you do want to allow that flexible pathway. But you also have an obligation to ensure that the student has met those standards.
Right.
And that it's documented. And that's a tough, that, you know, and I think all over the country, I'd say that's a tough balancing act for us to kind of figure out.
Yeah, you know, and the other thing too, again, speaking as a parent and with the experience, you know, I found, and this may be an opportunity for the high school to, to work a little more collaboratively with the local middle schools. But, you know, when my, my son tran, changed from, or graduated from eighth grade and wanted to take a virtual high school course over the summer, and during his freshman year of UHS, he was told, no, we couldn't do that because he was a freshman. And he had already done that in eighth grade here. So, you know, that, just be, sort of knowing what's available in the middle schools and how you can support that continued learning would be really helpful and might get into this type of growth here.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to you more about that. I'd like to kind of figure that out, this specific to that. I mean, we do, I can tell you, you know, real quickly that students do take virtual high school courses. Freshmen take them. It is, seniors do get preference.
Yeah.
And we only have 25 seats a semester. So, through all of this, one of the things, and especially looking at, we take policies and revision policies, is we've really worked hard at developing what's called a growth mindset. You know, the idea being that we all know from our life experience is that we really don't take the straight shot to success. And if you don't believe me, look at some of my artwork, it's still not good. What we do is we have a lot of failure along the way. And we have a lot of stepping back, we have a lot of, you know, regrouping. And we have to acknowledge that our students do that as well. And again, that's another change, kind of in how we think about students and learning. The idea that we have to accept the idea that you can fail. You know, that's also a challenge for our families to kind of say, oh, my student wasn't successful. And we try to say, not yet. You know, it's not that they're not successful, they're not successful yet. So, let's figure out what we need to do to help them become successful. So, kind of in summary of what I've said, you know, this year, what we're really looking at is we're still looking at offering the great quality that we currently offer. You know, as I tell anybody in public, we have one of the best faculties around, and we have an incredible high school, and we're grateful for all the support we get. But we do have an amazing institution there. And I'm proud of every single teacher in that building. This is gonna be a long transition. We're not gonna come out next year and say, we're fully formed. We have a lot of questions we have to answer, you know, and a lot of them, the questions that parents have. You know, what does it look like on a transcript? How do colleges look at a proficiency-based transcript? Those are all legitimate, rational questions. A lot of colleges say, well, we're gonna take any transcript. And, and we see that, because there are kids that go to really good schools who come from a non-traditional high school setting that has a narrative report card or a different way of reporting, and they do just fine. But I understand that this is a change from how all of us went through high school and how all of us reported grades. So, we need to do some more research on that. We're gonna continue to report habits of work. We're gonna continue to work with growth mindset. And we're gonna really try to make sure that what we say we're teaching students is what students are learning. And, you know, there's a catchphrase in education, you know, the taught curriculum versus the learned curriculum. And so, we want to make sure that those two are kind of congruent, that they're learning what we're teaching. So, here's a traditional guy, Nick, his last name's Jonas, it's a few years old. You may recognize him. So, he took English Language Arts. He got a 73, a 70, a 70, 68, and his final grade is a 70.25. Whatever that means. If I'm looking at that, at that grade, I don't know about participation grades. I don't know about how our tests weighted. I don't know any of that information. It's really not clear to me. But what we're hoping is, as we look ahead, that we're gonna be able to offer better feedback. You know, the idea that, you know, Nick's gotta work on interpreting complex literary and informational texts. If you've ever seen one of the songs, you know that's true. Writing clear and coherent arguments, he doesn't need that either. So, the whole idea here is that the student, and that's the most important consumer here, that the student gets a better picture of what they can do and what they can't do, rather than getting that C+ on the, on the paper with no comment. Okay? So, I think Lyle's gonna talk a little bit about middle and elementary.
All right. Can I...
Can we take a break and ask some questions?
Sure. Oh, absolutely, sure.
Go ahead.
I just was wondering how this translates for college path, high school seniors? You know, because, you know, I don't know that the college application process is gonna necessarily... I mean, they want GPAs and class rankings and that kind of stuff. And it's really sort of counterintuitive to that, kinda.
Right.
Makes it a lot more challenging, so...
Right. And that's why this year and for the next several years, we're gonna continue to report a grade.
You're doing both?
Yeah, we're kind of doing a hybrid system right now. And there are some teachers who are really frustrated with me for making that decision.
That's more work.
But, what's that?
It's more work, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, right.
A ton of work.
But, we don't have that answer, GPA. You know, the other question is, what do we do with all of our senior awards? They're, you know, they're awarded to class rank, highest GPA. You know, so those are questions that some schools have, like, you know, Rutland High School this year is doing a 1 through 4 grading scale. Straight 1 through 4. And, you know, one of the things I want to do in the next few weeks is find out from them, well, what's that looking like in your, for your seniors who are getting ready for colleges? Yeah. You know, that's, that's a question that we're not, we don't have an answer. Because if you go to every high school that's ahead of us in this, and in Vermont, there's not many. But if you go to Maine, you know, because a lot of schools in Maine have been doing this for a longer time, you're gonna get as many answers as there are schools. That's how I felt too.
I don't even know where to begin, frankly. And of course, I'm older, so I just know what I went through.
Right.
Maybe I missed this, but what's the impetus for this? Is it purely to help the kids understand what that C+ means? Or is there some other bigger thinking, you know, government thinking or education box thinking that, why, why?
Well, it's, it's to give a better indication of how students are learning. So, your first answer was, was the one. So, to make sure that students understand, you know, what they're doing well, what they need to improve on.
Okay.
That's, however, that said...
That sounds admirable.
There's also Act 77, which says that every student have a proficiency-based...
And that's Vermont?
That's Vermont.
Okay. Is that meant to tie into some other federal requirement? Or is that just Vermont and their legislative wisdom?
I think it's not just Vermont, but it's, and it's not federal. But it is a New England movement. I mean, so, a lot of schools in New England are going this way. Some schools in the Midwest are going this way, but, you know, obviously, we're fortunate ones we can drive to in a day. You know, the schools in, you know, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Maine, Hampshire, they're moving in this direction. But that said, my daughter goes to Keene High School, and there's no talk of this stuff.
Right. So, and I think it's wonderful, I think as much information as we can give to students, the more the better. I mean, that's very helpful. And you hit on this a little bit, and maybe it's as far as you can go, but unless it fits into the format of the rest of their lives, which is college, or some post, hopefully some, some post-secondary schooling, you know, whether it's folk or... Is, is, is there an interface there happening?
Depends on the college. Some colleges are, some colleges are embracing this, you know, like, for example, my nephew just graduated from Northeastern. And part of what he had to do was a community-based internship for several semesters. And that was assessed using a lot of the soft skills. And content work that he had been doing. There's other colleges that are way more traditional. So, that, you know, again, you're gonna get as many answers to that as there are colleges.
I, I guess I would like to see this dual evaluation be the standard. Because I can't imagine anybody getting away from a number.
Right.
Because we do that all, and every, everything I've touched in my life always boils down to a number, even though it's not really well thought of, that's what happens. But I think it would be nice to have that supplemental information to refer to when needed, or to bolster, or, or to... So, I, I can't, I, I'll be really curious to see, but I would caution... And it sounds like you have a bunch of caution on your end.
Yeah. I mean, the nice thing about the number in the future is the number's not gonna be weighted with participation. It's gonna be, how do, how much, how do they do in math? It's not gonna be how they do in math bolstered by that they're a really good citizen in the classroom. Or deflated by they're a poor citizen in the classroom.
It's not going to be that.
It's not going to be, because habits of work are gonna be, they're gonna be reported separately.
But not as a number?
But not as a number. Well, it's gonna be a 1 through 4 number. Because that rubric you have kind of lays out a 1 through 4 number.
Which will make it easier for a high school board reviewing an application. They're looking at numbers, scanning, you know, because like, I can't imagine them looking at 10,000 applications and having to read, agree every box. But it sounds interesting, I appreciate your taking...
It's interesting, and it's, it's daunting, I, you know, it's daunting. And, you know, you know, the faculty, we have some people who are gung-ho, let's do it right now. There's other ones who are like, you know, you'll, you'll prime my percentile scores for my cold dead fingers.
To me, it seems like a lot of, you know, what we would've called, or I would've called, and I know nothing about education, I just went through it, is, is good teachers already did that, they gave feedback. You know, that was what defined an excellent teacher, was you had that whole spectrum. And now, it's just being, what's the term?
Quantified.
Quantified, or...
Yeah.
Mandated, or...
Right.
Mandated, or...
Yeah.
Right, sure. All right, so, go ahead, I'm done.
Has there been any research on the effects of students who've been through proficiency-based learning? Or are we part of the Guinea pig generation, having lived through the 70s in education?
It's pretty new. So, I would say there's not a lot of data talking about how those students do in college.
In college.
Yeah. You know, the other thing is, you know, a lot of, a lot of students that would go through a small, like, in, in South Burlington, they have a school, in a school that's been proficiency-based for several years. Those students are selecting colleges that assess the same way. You know, so it's kind of like, I know this grading system, and I know this college uses a similar system. So, because I know that I'm comfortable, I'm gonna choose to go back to that college. That's not required, but I think that's what you see. But there's not enough schools doing the full proficiency model yet to really kind of say XYZ.
Don't mistake my question for me not saying that it's a good idea, just curious or something.
No, but, but you're right. I mean, it would be great if we could, you know, if we could step back and wait 15 years and see what data looks like, but I wouldn't want to do that. I mean, I think, I think we need to give a better picture of our students and how they're doing.
And how will parents, how will the outreach be done to parents who will be looking at a very different thing over the coming years? Because I know with like investigations, and I can say to my fellow parents, yes, but it's okay to get the wrong answer, you know? And they go like, what? You know, so I, it's, I feel it's, this is even on a bigger level, it's something that everybody understands.
So, one thing we want to do this year is offer a series of parent evenings to kind of talk about the various elements of this. And one of those evenings, which will probably be the one that engenders a lot of discussion, is what is the purpose of a grade? I don't want, I don't discuss that now. Right. But, I mean, that's a really huge question, and, you know, am I gonna go for...
It's called life.
I mean, but that's a big, big question. And I think that's kind of what we need to talk about, like, you know, what, why do we grade? And what does it mean? I think there's a lot of different reasons.
Oh, I was just curious, if you were aware of those kids in that school, new school, if they self-select to be within that type of a program in the first instance? If they're looking for that type of an education, maybe different from, there is no normal high school student, but a normal high school student, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if you know.
I don't, I mean, I know the...
Because it sounds like further on in their education, when they're getting to college, they are looking for that type of experience, or that type of feedback that they've gotten.
I don't really know.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. So, quickly, even though we know that the major changes are taking place 7 through 12, all teachers are going to have to make some changes in the way that they are helping students understand what they've learned and what they, what they haven't learned, what they still need to learn. Many schools have been working with growth mindset, so that teachers are aware that kids learn, and as they go along, they're able to learn more. It's not a fixed, like, you didn't get it and you're never going to get it. So, we've been working with that with teachers. The transferable skills you'll see also has, have the words, sample graduation proficiencies. All our teachers K to 6 have seen these, and we've really talked about them as being transferable skills, because that's exactly what they are. They can go across any content area and any grade level. So, if you actually look at just 1A, clear and effective communication, demonstrate organized and purposeful communication. A kindergarten student, after hearing a story that the teachers read, can show organized and purposeful communication by saying, this is what happened first in the story. This is what happened next. This is what happened last in the story. And obviously, as the, as the grades go on, students are more mature in their ability to show organized, organized and purposeful communication. So, all of our teachers K to 6 have looked at and are starting to incorporate these transferable skills throughout all content areas. The other thing that Steve talked about a little bit was personal learning plans. We're required to have them in 7th and 8th grade. They have them here possibly at 6th as well, I can't remember 6th, 7th, and 8th, because it's a middle school, it makes more sense. But, one of the things a personal learning plan does is ask students to set goals. So, we've talked with teachers about how can we build up to students setting their own goals? By, in younger grades, setting classroom goals. And what do we need to do to get to our classroom goal? What are some steps? So that they're practicing those steps and understanding what a goal is and what it is to set a goal, and how you document that you're meeting those goals early on before they get to the point where they have to create their own goals. So, all teachers know about this and are working, knowing that there are changes that are going to have to be made. If you look at the screen, a couple of things that we already have in place at the K-6 level. We grade on a 1 to 4, just like this habits of work. The report cards that you get have a good narrative to describe it. All of our teachers now are using Common Core State Standards. And those proficiencies that we've been talking about are based on the Common Core standards. I just said, teachers are, have been introduced to transferable skills. And, and all students in 7th and 8th, and in here 6th, they start with personalized learning plans. Is that it? Should we go? Great.
Thank you. I have a question. And I think it ties, ties right in with, maybe I'm repeating the question, but I've, I've yet to grasp the 1 through 4. I just can't grasp it. Because it seems to me there's gonna be a huge cohort that meets expectations. But there will also be a very distinct and significant spread in that cohort. And I just... Have any of you had, talk to me about your growth of adopting that and how you struggled with it, or, and got to wrap your arms around it? Because I just don't see how it applies to life. Unfortunately, we do judge, we make a lot of judgments in life. And when we have to make selections, we need specificity. So, help me with that.
Well, colleges use a 4-point scale. I mean, they have, you know, students go through their college career, and they get a 3.8 or a 3.9, or a 4.0.
Right, there's, that's right, there's, there's gradations in between.
So, that, that, that exists.
Except that right now, it's just 1, 2, 3, or 4, there's no gradation. We don't have it here.
Oh, no, no. We would have the gradations.
Okay, so I was starting here with elementary.
Right.
So, we don't have gradations. So, then it evolves to a gradation at some point?
That's another stunning debate for us, you know, because some teachers are like, well, how many decimal points do I have?
Right.
Right, right. You know, and we've talked about going out to the 10th, we've talked about... So, so when we had the discussion through, about the 1 through 4 scale, and this is bringing up a painful memory for me, we had a discussion with a group, with our core group of proficiency teachers that were working on this and developing the model. And we had a discussion about what does a 1 through 4 scale look like? And it really came down, again... And it really came down again, because a high school is so silo driven in content. It really came down to what different departments really held as was a three. So with the next gen science standards, you know, our department head and her department kind of said, you know, if we were to use the current next gen one through four blue bricks, very few of our students would be proficient. And then another department says, well, we don't really look at the one through four scale that way. And so that's one of the conversations at the high school that we have to have is, you know, what does that one through four scale mean? And as they made clear to me, and I think I agree with this, is that you can't kind of say, well, a three point O is an eighty and a three point one is a, you know. You really can't do that effectively across the curricular areas. So that's, so, so you're right. That's something that at the high school, that we're going to have to continue to have that conversation. You know, again, you know, I, I had the opportunity to kind of look at some of the stuff that Rutland developed over the summer. They've got a pretty well thought out four point scale. I'm not holding it up as the, as the be all, end all. But that's the scale I'm going to bring to the, to the high school teachers and say, here's one that has a lot of thought behind it. Take a look at this and kind of see where that leads us. We're going to come up with our own system. I don't know what it's going to look like yet, so, but you're right.
Can I offer something with that too?
Yeah.
You know, when we switched over to standards based kind of learning and application, for me, that one to four meant that we were no longer sort of separating the wheat from the chaff. We weren't looking to see who got it and who didn't get it. We were looking to see, we were assuming that everybody was going to get it. And this is how they were progressing along that everybody's going to get it. So, you know.
Yeah.
K to six, K to eight. It just assumes that we have responsibility for making sure everybody leaves here with a three or a four. And, you know, and, and all the work that we've tried to do in terms of unlearning that. You know, four is an A, three is a B, two is a C. It goes right back into effect.
Yeah, I get.
In college.
Appreciate that. I, I've finally been able to get that because if I just read what they mean, I can see that it's not a linear thing. It's, it's, but what I get, what I struggle with, and I think you partially answered it, that there will be gradations, but it's still a struggle. How do you get to those gradations? But to me, three has a huge number of people in it. And, and when you go, if you're an employer or college, you know, it's only your first job, usually the one that cares about your grades, but how do you tell the difference between you and you? You both got threes. So that, that's where I, so, to be continued and I, I hope to hear a lot about it. I guess I would encourage you, as much as it's going to be a ton of work, is you're going to be dealing with parents like me.
Sure.
As you roll, you know, implement this, I would, I would encourage a lot of information flow rather than waiting till the end. Unless you're lucky enough that everybody agrees with you in the end.
But, you know, again, you know, I want to go back to something I said before. You know, where this is going to live or die really is what happens in the classroom. So we want to make sure that we have the classroom, because that's the most important place for our kids.
That is.
So we want to make sure that is nailed down and the teachers are communicating effectively. And that they're able to use those, you know, those content and those skills and make sure that that language is in place.
Absolutely. With you a thousand percent. It's just that little percent of, well, how do they get into the school they want to get into if the school doesn't like that format?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry it took so long to get to you guys here.
Yeah, what would the presentation have looked like three months ago?
A little bit shorter.
Okay, administrative report. I took up my time, didn't. You know, I just, on the side, I remember sitting with people from the State Board of Education in 2000, talking to me about the idea of every kid having an individual personal learning plan. And I was like, please, how could that ever be? And they said, you know, we have to get out of that, we're responsible for teaching them everything. Because what that everything is going to look like down the road, we don't even have a clue. We have to prepare them for, for taking that responsibility of learning and continuing their learning, persevering and putting it on their shoulders and helping them. And somehow, personal learning plans or that individualized learning plan seem to be the way to do it. And I was, it's interesting that how many years later, you know, 14 years later, it actually comes out in their quality standards that they're mandating it. And I thought, oh, there's no way to do it, but yeah, we do it.
And Steve did talk about employers and, and I've met in the same groups that he has with employers and they want to teach the skills that they want their employee, employees to have, except they want them to get there on time. They don't want them to use their cellphone during work hours. You know, there are certain things, they want them to be able to get along with the people and be able to work together with people.
Want them to work hard.
Yep. The other things, they're, they're, we'll, we'll work on that with them. But these skills, we can't teach them. They need to have that when they get here.
And yeah, when my nephew's report card has a two on it, it's like.
Oh, no. We got to do something about this.
Not to be personal, but there's still good reason for that concern because it doesn't meet expectations.
Right.
So that, that's a. That's why I was focusing on the three because.
One foot in that paradigm that we're living in that this should happen on this sort of.
Right, right. Oh, you get about, on that. Well, that's the other thing. I've talked to some people in the medical profession and I, about, but about development. Some people don't have that, cortex isn't developed until you're 22. So to ask an elementary kid to, to know what they want to do and put a personal, with that burden on them seems a little ridiculous, but we'll not go there right now.
They want to be hockey players and basketball players.
Or jet pilots, who knows, but anyways, it's not easy, right?
It would be interesting to have Natalie come and talk to me from VAC about, you know, how that college process works with, you know, kids, it's just transitioning them to colleges.
We'll say, Dan, perhaps for employers of which I am one, it's nice for students to hear that sometime before their first day at work.
That they have a good time.
It's an expectation that these skills are talking about because I'm often the one telling them, okay, no, you can't talk on your cellphone in the middle of the day, you know, blah, 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 so.
I absolutely agree that we have, employers have a brutal time.
So it's nice that you're not.
It used to be when we grew up, you were looking for the cream of the crop.
Yeah.
Everything else was expected. So that bar unfortunately has come down. And that's a disappointing reality that falls on school systems, unfortunately. But that's a.
Yep.
Wait, I digress a little.
So I just have some follow up pictures from our Olympic, beginning of the school year with our middle schoolers who ended the week on Friday. A week ago Friday, at the lake. And with their Flashmore dance routines. That I'll show you on video after the meeting. And just to let you know that we have some upcoming dates. K to four open house is going to be Monday, September 19th. And the open house for grades five through eight will be September 28th. Both of the open houses are going to be from six to seven. And they're going to be held in this sort of traditional sense of an open house. You can come during that time, anytime during that time and with your child and take a tour, visit the classroom, do your scavenger hunt at your own pace. With whatever timeframe that works best for you. Open house. And the Big E, the band's going to be going Friday, September 30th.
The what?
The, um, band's going to the Big E. The marching band on Friday, September 30th. Got it. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the insurance people on the Affordable Care Act meeting from Dummerston at 3:45. I don't know quite sure that they're going to be rolling out the options that we have in terms of insurance as we move to a single payer system.
So that's not a union thing?
The Affordable Care Act.
No, I know what that is.
Well, that's a good question.
Is this more of a union negotiation?
This is separate from what the union, the union will negotiate things like copay. But all employees will have a choice of four different plans. Those plans will differ in how much the, the employee pays upfront, how much they'll pay in deductibles, how much for medications, that type of thing. And that will be a choice as to what meets their needs the best.
In what year does this take place?
2018. January 1, 2018.
So it's next fiscal year budget?
So we're doing.
Halfway through next fiscal year budget.
We're doing the informational meetings now. Teachers will need to start making those decisions in the spring because by November 30, November 1, I can't remember.
November, yeah, 15, I'm going to 17.
Right, November 15th. Blue Cross Blue Shield wants the information of what plans teachers will be choosing to do.
I thought they extended that Cadillac deadline. They didn't.
Um, they did, but the existing plans that all of our employees are, are participating in are, are dissolved as of December 2017.
So VHI made that decision because they were following the federal Cadillac deadline?
Yeah, they've negotiated with the Insurance Commission, the State of Vermont Insurance Commission, to create new plans that meet the Affordable Care Act requirements. And they have been approved by the Insurance Commission. And if employers want to stay with VHI, then they have a choice of these four plans. The employee would have a choice of these four plans. It's up to the school boards to negotiate to what extent you want to pay for those traditionally as we have over many, many years. Or whether you want to go out and look at another provider other than VHI.
So VHI drove this. They could have stuck with their existing plans, but once they decide.
They, they couldn't stick with their existing plans. They, they didn't qualify to be Affordable Care.
But they had originally. Because everybody else had to change and they, they were, they were allowed to stay out with a grandfather.
Initially, they were going to dissolve the organization because the plans didn't meet the Affordable Care Act criteria. But they, they went back to the drawing board and, and thought that the value they provided school boards as a self-informed pool all of these years has, has proven to be a good model. It's brought in stability of rates in relatively competitive rates with what's, what's available in other markets in Vermont. So it was that board, the Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust, in conjunction with this VHI, I guess it's a separate entity now, said, well, let's see, let's see if we can design a plan that would be acceptable to the, the Vermont Commission, Insurance Commission that approves any insurer to do business in Vermont. You know, under the criteria of does it qualify under the Affordable Care Act, so. So they took that initiative. They're making the offer. This, this information meeting is to say, essentially, all of our employees have been accustomed to dealing with a VHI interface. And this is a, an option to extend that. But it's certainly subject to the negotiations processes to whether or not that is the path as we go.
So it's not up to each board. It's, it's up to the collective negotiation process. So if one board says no.
Yeah, it, the Vermont law in 2012 part of, you know, Act 153 was saying, it said that, that supervisory unions have to have collective bargaining.
So it's really not up to the, I just want to clarify. You said it's up to each board to decide.
It is up to the boards, but, you know, through your representation on the negotiating.
Right, so unless everybody agrees with your board, you're not going to get it. Do you have any insight as to what they're going to do with their surplus? Because that was a big, big issue a few years ago. That they were, that's why they kept their plans because they didn't want to have to give back their surpluses. I guess when we have to make a decision as a board, I'd like to have some insight. And maybe you can either tell us who to talk to or you can find that out.
About, about a surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend you contact Laura Sorensen. She's the director. Laura Sorensen, she's the executive director of Vermont School Board's Insurance Trust and, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't know.
Great, thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr.? Okay, thank you. Committee reports?
I don't know if you want to do, I guess we should do solar. That is committee.
That is a committee.
Um, I'll keep it very brief, but we do need to act on this. Frank, have you come up to speed? Did you go to any of those meetings last week with Encore?
I, I didn't go to the meetings, but I'm sure.
Okay, so what's your, your thoughts on this?
I think solar is a great, a great option for districts. You, as you know, we considered a very similar proposal a year ago. And then the successful bidder in that process, Sun Edison, has gone bankrupt subsequently. They were one of the largest solar developers in the world. They're a much larger organization than solar. Who's this? Sun Solar?
Sky Solar.
Sky Solar. Sky Solar is a Hong Kong based company that's got operations in New Jersey. They're structured similarly. They're, they're a power purchase agreement based model. So from the, um, from the, the surface of looking at the materials and understanding their proposal, which is basically the same proposal that was part of the bid process that we looked at a year ago. It's, it's, it's structured, obviously, within the net metering statutes of Vermont. The fundamental concern I would have is the same one that we raised a year ago, which is the structure of this offer is to sign up for a fixed price procurement of, of electricity for 20 years. And as I had advised you before, you know, most, most of us in the, in the business offices that looked at this, you know, just imagine doing that in oil. If you had made that decision one year ago, two years ago, or 10 years ago, you know, what, what would that have looked like? That, so the, the issue for, for my point of view is with this offer is how to evaluate a fixed price. I would, essentially what that does is it transfers the risk to the school district. It, the only way the power purchase agreement works for the developer is if prices stay where they are or they rise into the future. Because as, as you see in your analysis, you know, today and, and for a year from now, you see there's a favorable difference between what it costs us, meaning what Green Mountain Power bills Dummerston School and what they are willing to sell us the, the renewable credit for. So the difference right now is we get a credit for 19 cents and we buy it back for 13.9. That's a, that's a good deal. But if, if residential rates, if commercial rates that are charged from Green Mountain Power to the school districts declines, it won't take long for us to be obligated to buy electricity at, you know, potentially a higher price than what you could if you didn't enter into the agreement. So that, that's this concern with a fixed price contract. You know, my advice would be to, to try to negotiate a variable price. A price that's tagged to the current prevailing rate. That is the structure of the previous bid. And aside from that, I, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity.
Just to be clear, the previous bid is no longer on the table, correct?
It's not on the table.
Right.
Is, is this the, the solar consortium?
No, we, we have been waiting for the, the Green Mountain Power and the Public Service Department and the legislature to basically create more stability in the, in the landscape for making this viable. And it, it was, it's, you know, it's clear, this has been an immature industry in Vermont. It's been unpredictable for the developer. Clearly, it, it created, you know, problems with that last round. And there does seem to be, as, as the literature indicates, a scaling back of, of net metering. Um, and there does seem to be, as, as the literature indicates, uh, a scaling back of, of net metering, um, uh, which has other implications, you know, for the long term, for twenty years. Um, so, um, my advice is, I think, I think solar's a good thing, um, but I don't think a twenty-year fixed price, uh, for a utility, uh, purchase is, is a, is a wise, um, commitment.
Okay, so I've sent everything out to you folks, um, I would recommend that we look at it and have a discussion at our next meeting. Um, I met with the, the Dummerston Energy Committee last night, um, there's some very experienced and knowledgeable, talented people on that committee. Um, one of them's here. And, uh, they have reviewed everything in this proposal, they've reviewed the Public Service Board's, uh, proposed regulations, they're proposed, right? They're coming up, that are, that appear to be, uh, quite a bit, uh, very limiting on what can happen going forward as far as what size projects can be approved by the state, um, what the rates, they'll be able to give back, what the adders are. And they're all less attractive, um, than this. Um, so in a nutshell, the Energy Committee has recommended to both the town and the school board that we pursue this. Um, and they, one of the documents I sent out to you was a, a list of, of their thoughts and suggestions. I, uh, we did talk a little bit last night about the difference between a, uh, fixed-price contract and a, um, discounted contract. And there was nobody in the room that was concerned that electric rates would, would go down. It's nothing like oil, um, it's very volatile. Uh, since I've been in, back in Dummerston, in aggregate, the rate's gone up from eleven and a half to fourteen point eight cents. Uh, it's been about twelve years. So my personal feeling as well as the Energy Committee is that this is worth pursuing. And I think, at this point, I'd leave it at that, I'd, I'd ask you all to review the information and come prepared to talk about it and ask questions and, and go forward at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, I, just to, uh, to add, uh, a, a note to what, uh, uh, has been said already, and, and indeed to support, uh, Dr. Rooker, uh, I, we urge on the, on the Energy Committee, we urge you to look carefully at the contract in light of the changes proposed by the, uh, Public Service Board, to be sure that, uh, that they, they're, the limitations and the, um, and the restrictions that are going to kick in on January first will, to what extent they'll apply to this contract. And you need a lawyer to do that because it's very obscure, uh, legalese, and we urge you to, uh, think of course about the fixed price, but also about the technicalities of the changing law.
Thank you.
Do, would you have a copy of the proposed rules, or could you, could you forward to the school board a copy?
I get smokey, want me to get smokey to do that?
They're, they're on a link.
Oh, are they?
They're, um, just email you that today.
Okay, all right, then I'll-
Are they up on the PSB website as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's a special link to click right on the page you want.
Sure, thank you.
A couple of things on that, just-
Wait, Katrina, Christina.
Christina had a question.
So where would one find an attorney that would look at something like that?
Well, Bob Fisher has reviewed this contract, um, for the last entity and then this entity because Bob represents, oh, actually, I should have, Michael speaking works for Bob, but my understanding is that Bob's reviewed it in, for Wyndham Solid Waste Management District in anticipation of numerous municipalities and school districts considering this. And Bob's firm does get involved with some of these towns and municipalities.
Seems like a weird kind of niche kind of thing to me, but like-
What's that?
With laws changing about energy rules, like, but if there's somebody around here who does that, that's right.
I, I think it's probably just somebody that has familiarity with statute and PSB proceedings and can determine whether there will be affecting anything retroactively or whether it's all from the time this PSB ruling takes effect and it's just going forward. I don't know if you have any-
Well, I, I have looked at this type of contract as well, um, in a variety of contexts, um, not this particular contract and not, um, just to be clear, not for an entity that's also considering using myself. I don't know what Bob has done or not done in that regard, um, but I know that typically these contracts, um, often look very, very one-sided. Um, and, um, one, I, I, as, as an attorney advising a client, not in this particular context, I would urge caution. Um, and oftentimes, I think you're facing an uphill battle negotiating with an entity that's really looking at the financial aspects. Correct me if I'm wrong, from your perspective, but I think is really looking at, um, how this plays out in a, the company you sign up with is not necessarily going to be the company that builds the project, that sees the project out, that, uh, they're, they're quickly going to get bought and sold, kind of like commercial mortgages. Um, and just to correct one thing that you said, Sun Edison went bankrupt, but not all of the entities of Sun Edison went bankrupt. So there are some Sun Edison LLCs of various varieties that are not within the bankruptcy that are covered by the parent company at the present time, um, but that, um, has had ramifications in southern Vermont. They're, they're really, um, they're tricky. They're really, they're really tricky, um, contracts to, uh, to evaluate. And I think solar's a good idea overall, um, but again, I think we have, um, the concerns that Frank was talking about with the long-term cost. But that's what's made them attractive to kind of get everybody going, I think the legislature threw giant carrots out there, um, in terms of how they were allowed to offer credits, um, early on, but that's just, uh-
So just so I'm clear-
And so that's, that's changing, I'm-
Your concerns would be more contractual, not, I mean, it would, your concerns would apply to it either discounted or a fixed price because it's more about the viability of the entities running the-
I would be very clear on how a fixed price is, or a discounted price gets calculated because that has been, um, that has been a tricky aspect of some other contracts that I've taken a look at is how that, how those rates get calculated and how those are documented. Um, because you end up with a, with a service provider, you end up with GMP, you end up with a servicer who does the financial side of it. That's really all that they're looking at once it's built out. Um, and who's given directions to whom and how does that credit get allocated when you have more than one account? Um, things like that can get tricky if it's not spelled out.
Sure.
So there's also a provision in the co- in the current contract that- that refers to, um, if, if the credit isn't used within a year, um, they will expire and they're forfeited and, uh, and without compensation due from Green Mountain Power. And that, that, that speaks to that issue right there.
Right, and I mean, the other issue is like, what if you're using significantly less power than you have over the life of a, of, like, what if they come out with a brand-new light bulb?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to get into weeds on this, but- One of those, one of the sections does address that, it says that both parties will agree to reallocate appropriately. But I, I think the point is, let's have somebody look at the contract.
Okay.
Is that what you're, is it, would that be your baseline?
That would be, uh, uh-
Smart thing to do.
Yeah, I was going to say a no-brainer.
No, I, I assume that, I didn't want to vote tonight, but I wanted to get the board to at least read the information.
Yeah.
And then if, decide next meeting if it's worth having somebody look at it or not.
Okay. Thank you.
It's all quiet on the Transportation Committee?
Yes.
Oh, you, nothing, huh?
This has been very, very disappointing for my first time on the Transportation Committee, I'd say, thank you.
Don't want this upstart issue.
Start something else, right?
Act forty-six.
Well, we had, um, two meetings here recently, we had, uh, a meeting on the September seventh with the town clerks. Um, after our August, end of August meeting, we had, the, the committee had voted to submit the report and move forward with the November election, and there were many concerns with the town clerks, or that the town clerks raised. So, um, those of us, there were about three members from the study committee that, that attended and then, uh, all the surrounding town clerks were, or the affected town clerks were there. And they had a lot of, uh, of great insights, like sort of the whole Act forty-six process. It's, it's peeling back the layers of the onion and finding that there's a new layer there. So, uh, we learned a lot about it and that, um, carried over into the actual study committee work session on September eighth, uh, where the group voted to postpone, uh, the vote, um, and also to separate the, the questions, um, based on, uh, input from the, uh, AOE and legal counsel. So right now, the tentative schedule is that, um, a vote on, uh, of member districts uh, to allow Vernon to withdraw would happen sometime, uh, in January, you know, or, or s- base, around that timeframe based on s- what statutory requirements. And then, um, a unification vote, uh, and then election of, uh, unified boards, officers would happen probably in town meeting in March. And we did, uh, there were some changes that were, uh, made to the report itself. Uh, there was an appendix added, uh, to, uh, outline, uh, program information, opportunities, enrollment trends. And then, uh, do, uh, sort of the general comparison of, uh, what programs exist in which schools today. You know, sort of current state and a little history and then what we think might be possible in the future in terms of, uh, you know, programming across, um, what is now separate districts. And, um, there was some clarification added to some of the wording, it was, was fairly small, that part of it. And obviously, the report will need to go through some additional, uh, revisions, um, with the, the change in the vote dates. Uh, there was a fair amount of discussion about commingling, um, and, uh, some Dummerston residents, and Senator Jeanette White urged, uh, further investigation, uh, about commingling and the at-large model, um, to make sure that it conforms with, um, statute. There was some question about whether the Agency of Ed's interpretation of statute really was, uh, proper. So I know Ron was going to be following up with, um, the AOE and then I believe the Secretary of State, Jim Condos, uh, to, for clarification, as well as legal counsel. And I don't know if we, our next meeting is on the twenty-second, um, September, from six to eight at Putney Central. Um, we had had, uh, forums, uh, sort of scheduled in anticipation of a November vote, but that's been pushed off. Um, and we're, there were some potential dates set, um, but they're further, they, they basically begin in October, so. But, uh, I don't know if I've got everything. But, uh, yeah.
What was Chris Leopold's, uh, position on the, uh, was it the commingling of the state? That you just said the state had a questionable, uh, opinion on it?
Um, his opinion was that, okay, so that when we vote, assuming we vote, to unify, that that initial ballot, uh, does not have to be commingled because we are all separate districts. Any subsequent, um, election of officers and, uh, budget votes would be mingled, co- they would be mingled, they commingled, I mean, sorry. Um, and that's because we're all one entity and there was also some discussion about, um, uh, district budgets are traditionally commingled now. So like, uh, we talked about the example of the high school budget because that's, we don't separate out Dummerston voters', you know, opinions on, uh, the high school budget now, it's all one big pot, so. But again, that's going to be looked into further, so.
Is that done by Australian ballot or by the floor?
The high school is done by floor vote.
Okay, so that's kind of the typical, right? Because these are all the Australian ballots, the way it's presented now anyways?
It is, yeah, Australian ballot, yeah, in the articles, yeah.
So was Chris's opinion equal to the AOE's, or was it different?
It was, it did coincide with the AOE's, yeah.
I'm not sure we really heard Chris Leopold's, I don't work the lecturing, heard Chris Leopold, I thought it was an AOE response, but, um-
I'm just curious.
Yeah. But, you know, there, there were some interesting issues raised, uh, with the at-large voting, you know, membership, and I think it would be great to get that particular issue hashed out because as Jeanette pointed out, you know, the communities are electing, the communities still exist even though the school district doesn't exist. And they're electing a resident that, with a residency requirement. So, you know, why wouldn't they be represented, or representing their particular town? And, you know, does that really gel with the at-large model, so, you know?
It was, it was the Secretary of State that she said that disagreed with Donna Russo Savage on that point. Yeah, because it's an election representative thing and that's not Donna Russo Savage's real area of expertise, but it would be the Secretary of State. So that was her input.
Yeah.
I am not, I'm just relating the story.
Sure, that's all I wanted to know, I didn't want to know the-
So that was on the at-large representation.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be interesting, I'm sure we'll talk about it on the, uh, on the twenty-second, you know, and, uh, learn probably even more than we ever really wanted to know.
Want to know about commingling, which as I said before, sounds much more fun than it is.
Yep, so, but, um, yeah, so it seems like we do have more time. Uh, that was one thing that came out of the town clerks meeting, and they also came, I, I should have mentioned this too, is they also came to the September eighth meeting, so we had the meeting during the day on the seventh in the morning, uh, where they all came. And then, uh, at the study committee work session on the eighth, that evening they came. And, um, you know, and they were very much appreciative of the committee listening to their input about, you know, the complexities of holding such a vote on a federal election, even though our intent was good, you know, to try and get as many people involved as possible, um, you know, it, it seems wiser that we delay in, um-
And I think, well, I think the other thing was that a lot of study committee members were speaking about how much money it would save and how much easier it would be to do one election, but the town clerks were very clear to explain it was the opposite was, was true.
Yes.
So, you know, oh, it's going to be so easy to do one vote, we're going to save so much money, so much time. And the town clerks were like, no, 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 you're making it harder because it's a federal election, which is a whole different ballgame, so.
Apparently the, the deadlines are earlier, so they've already submitted all the ballot language and sent it and it's going to be set up for their tabulators, you know? So if we were to, if we had pushed ahead with the November, we would have had to, uh, come up with separate, obviously ballot language that would have to be hand-counted. And in Brattleboro, you know, there's like six thousand people coming out for, you know, an election, federal election, and, yeah, you know, it's just, it's- So, you know, they were, they appreciated this, so.
Amy, I had a question about, um, you said that the committee voted to send the report up, but then you mentioned that there are changes that are going to be made to the document as well. How does that, how's that work?
We made a motion to notify the AOE that we were making some revisions and, to the report.
Okay, who makes those revisions?
Well, I mean, the committee talks about it and then Ron usually works with legal counsel to make sure that the wording is correct, you know?
Okay.
And then-
There's no drafting committee that ever got established?
No, not really, no.
Okay.
I mean, we've worked on the language as a group from the onset.
Okay.
So. There, there were other smaller, you know, like subcommittees when we were looking at different options and looking at, um, the programming at different schools, you know, there's a little group that got together and gathered all the information together, you know, to, to get the pictures of- you know, to, to get the pictures of what was offered at each school, that kind of stuff.
Technically, Ron's not even a study committee member. I mean, he's like a, he's like an advisory participant as far as, um...
Yeah, he's central office, he's superintendent, yeah.
Okay, so, no, no one from the study committee got tasked with working directly with the attorney or a voter member?
Well, Alice does work a lot with Alice Loughlin. She's the study committee chair from Putney. She works a lot with Chris directly on language and that kind of stuff, so, yeah.
I just looked at some of the minutes and it was kind of unclear as to tell who was actually doing the drafting at various stages and it's, I mean, I think, um, a long time ago, before I was, um, sitting here and, um, I just remembered it was difficult to get a current draft and it seemed like there was one draft that, that members had or that the administration maybe had and then there wasn't the same draft being circulated amongst the, the public or at least posted on the website.
Yeah, that was very early on.
Okay, is that, is that getting resolved?
Yes, yeah, yeah, there was a little, um... So, the last draft, let's see, there was the July twelfth draft and then there was a draft for August twenty-fifth, I wanna say? Or August thirtieth, I forget which.
August thirtieth draft.
Those are all posted now on the website, so, um...
Yeah, it was that July period, I remember.
Yeah, there was, yeah, when we were...
I think even a Dummerston resident did bring it to the study committee that the articles that we reviewed on the September eighth were not there when we sent down for the meeting, that they hadn't been posted, which I appreciate there's a lot to post and it's the first week of school, but that, it's not completely resolved. I guess it was a Dummerston resident that said, "I was looking for the article," so it's just, you know, it's an ongoing, so...
Thanks.
So, what's the next step for the study committee, steps?
To find out about co-mingling and at-large from the Secretary of State, I think.
Yeah, yeah, make sure that those models actually work. I mean, the co-mingling, I think that answer will come to us hopefully after conversation with the Secretary of State. And then that will lead into sort of clarity about the, the board model. You know, along the, um, the model has been, we looked at the proportional model in the very early stages, which gives Brattleboro, it's based on population, you guys all know this, um, based on population, so a nine-member board would give, that would give six members to Brattleboro and then one to each of the surrounding towns excluding Vernon, who's not participating. So, in order to, um, take that hu- you know, take that over, that majority, Brattleboro acquiesced very politely and pleasantly and said, you know, "We're happy to, you know, have a different type of representation." And then we went with, we started looking at this at-large model, which gives them three at-large, or three members, each of the surrounding small towns one and then there are three at-large members voted from any of the district town, or any of the towns.
Does one, does, like, does someone who is, um, maybe trying to get on the board, would they need to, if they were from Dummerston, for example, would they need to choose, "I'm gonna go for an at-large position or a Dummerston position?"
Yep.
And does everybody else get to vote on whether I'm a Dummerston representative?
Yep, yeah, and that's where we get into the residency requirement, that sort of conundrum. But, uh, yeah, it's, it'll be interesting to see how this all hashes out.
Then how would that be a representative of the town of Dummerston?
I, I might have a tiny bit of, uh, comment for the public on that because, um, it's a question that, um, I raised at the meeting and, um, I've since done a little bit of reading on it and it's something you, I would love this board to discuss, um, just because I, at the beginning of the meeting last time, uh, you mentioned something that Jill had written into you about how Brattleboro may be willing to change to, uh, a rep, direct, a directly elected, uh, board. Um, and I think that Dummerston may be better represented if it directly elects its representative as opposed to having an at-large rep, um, or, um, or that one rep who's required to be a resident of Dummerston. Um, because I found Supreme Court case law that says that, um, an at-large representative who merely has a residency requirement in that town is not the sole legal representative of that town from which he's a resident. That person who's been elected by the entire electorate has a legal obligation and a duty to represent the entire electorate. So, even if someone ran for that Dummerston resident position, um, if they started advocating solely for Dummerston, uh, they could be subject to a suit. It's some, it's an equal protection claim, right? That the people from Brattleboro are not being adequately represented by somebody they elected who's a resident of Dummerston. So, if Dummerston is really interested and if the other small towns are truly interested in having a small-town voice on that board, even though they would only have respectively each one rep for a total of three small-town reps on that board, those small towns would have a true voice on that board only with a directly represented repres- person, a directly elected resident from that town. Uh, and nobody else votes on that person. Beautifully, that might get rid of the co-mingling problem. Um, although I think the latest information is that the state does not disagree that an at-large representative, um, uh, need not be co-mingled. The danger, though, is that, you know, a year after the unified board is formed, they could easily amend the articles and make the vote co-mingle if they wanted to. There's a, there's another problem, however, and that is that I think the statutes aren't really written to permit co-mangled, uh, director votes because there's no statute permitting it. There is for the budget, but there isn't for directors. And right now, the only statute on the books is the Australian ballot statute that says that returns shall be filed with the town clerk. So, so long as the polling places are the towns and the, what is it called? The, the Board of whatever the election...
Civil Authority.
The Civil Authority, as long as that's an entity in each different town, uh, statute requires those entities to report the returns of each town. So, to co-mingle, you'd have to supersede that statute. I don't know who has the power to do that just by putting it in, into an article of agreement, but I think that's the issue. But, I would, I would love it if this board and all the boards, um, considered whether they should be advocating for a directly elected representative.
Yep.
And I don't, I, I would love to, you all, for you all to address that.
I, I do think that's on the table now, yeah, so... And, you know, I, I think our goal was, um, and by "our", I mean the study committee. You know, the goal is to give, uh, a greater voice and presence to the smaller towns and, you know, maybe that's not achieved by the at-large model. We'll, we'll find out here, we'll figure it out and, uh, come to a consensus. And, um, you know, to speak to your point and as about, um, the articles being changed, I'd have to check and see which articles the co-mingling is in because there are specific ones that only can be changed by a vote of the electorate. So, and I think that some of those might be, it might include that reference to the co-mingling. So, it would, it, it potentially would be way more difficult to, to change, so...
I can't recall either, if it was, I think, I think the test is whether it's in the ballot.
Yeah.
And when Chris Leopold went through that checklist of what can be amended, what can't be amended, if it's on the ballot that townspeople vote on, it can't be easily amended.
I'd also like to say that Brattleboro has said, both on co-mingling and the representative, directly proportional or at-large voting system, sorry, that they don't care.
Yeah, they defer.
So, they, however the three remaining small towns that are left standing vote, that will be, I, it's, you know, you're asking regular citizens to become experts on stuff that is extremely, like, you know, weird constitutional attorneys might be really interested in this, but, I mean, I, I read tons about it and very intelligent people in the room did, clearly did not understand what I was talking about. So, there's a lot of education for people to understand that I'm not saying we're some protected class, but that we want to have a vote at the table.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think we get it here because we've spoken about it and a lot of our townspeople, you know, God love Dummerston 'cause they show up and they think and they follow up, but I think in other towns, you're, you're asking people to step up to think about an awful lot, so...
But I would hope that if it does come up at the study committee level that the boards are given an opportunity to weigh in on whether they prefer at-large or, uh, directly elected representative, because it's, it's a material change, so...
Yeah, that, that was a, an issue that came up at the end, near the end of the meeting and it, I think the general consensus was that, yes, it would go, the, any of the changes would go, we'd go back and have feedback from the local boards, so... But, uh, you know, the, the at-large membership too, uh, in our early days of discussing it, we talked, we struggled with the, you know, Dummerston person representing only Dummerston, but no, that's not at the at-large, you represent the whole, yeah, so, you know, it is a...
Well, it's where your duty of loyalty lies.
Right, yeah, you're doing a loyalty, but then, you know, your elected duty would be to the greater body, you know, if you were at-large, you know? And there are some pros and cons to it, obviously, you know? And one of the pros that we did talk about was the coming to getter, together of all of our communities around all of our schools, you know? So, I mean, and you could, yeah, I mean, you guys can see the advantages and disadvantages, so...
So, you got, you were able to address, um, that one issue, but what other, as far as next steps for the study committee, what do you, you've got sidetracks, are you, about, you mentioned...
Co-mingling, we need, we need the clarification on that. Um, we need the clarification about the at-large voting or board. Um, and then the, uh, report would not, is not going to be submitted, uh, at the September State Board of Education meeting. Uh, it would probably happen later, October, November, uh, so there would be preparation for that. And then I think, um, you know, assuming, uh, we have some answers to the co-mingling and, uh, board makeup, you know, which model, you know, better serves our communities, um, that we would move from there to work towards, uh, public education forums, you know, going around to our communities, making sure that, um, people understand, you know, what's at stake, you know, the good and the bad in, in each of the communities, um, you know, of such an arrangement. And, um, yeah, I know the town clerks said it would be very beneficial to have some type of, uh, information to have at, at, uh, the federal election in November, you know? Because it's not gonna be voted on, you can have a little table or you could have a little blurb, you know, maybe with scheduled dates or whatever, that kind of stuff. Uh, but, you know...
At the very least, it seems wise to advertise when there would be further implementation.
Yes, yep, yep, and then, uh, yeah, so...
So, one of the things I was wondering, and I, I think you just answered, but, um, the next final version of the articles will come back to each board?
Yes, that was my impression from that meeting, yeah.
Okay, I would...
That we would not proceed without that feedback.
If, if there's any question about that, um, I think our board should strongly,
Yep.
uh, recommend that you make that known, that we want that to come back. Unless anybody disagrees.
Yeah, we could even make a motion that the, uh...
Think that would be, uh, I think...
Yeah, that the Dummerston Town School Board would like to make a motion that the Dummerston Town School Board urged the study committee representative to advise the rest of the study committee that they would like to see the final draft articles of agreement, uh, for consideration and discussion at, at, um, you know, as, at a, when they're complete.
And before they go to the state.
Can you say it again? That wasn't typed fast enough?
I'll just make it up.
Oh, it's on tape. Will it be, will it be done by Friday?
I'll get the audio.
Okay, okay, good, I'm fine, all right.
So, was there gonna be a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor of what Michael said, if we were...
Thanks, yeah.
You were listening, right?
I was listening, but I can't think of, yeah, I was actually worried about Christina being a type fast enough, so I kind of spaced it out. That the boards have a chance to review the articles before they go any further. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, these are intentions, I don't hear any, so, okay, thank you. Thank you, Amy, for that extensive report.
You're welcome.
Um, school board clerk, we have been operating without an official clerk for, I don't know when.
Too long.
Too long, April, March, something, it's been a while. So, now that we have a full board again, I was just wondering, have any nominations for who would like to be the clerk?
Well, actually, can I, well, go ahead, we'll, we'll go to discussion after that.
Yeah.
I'm not making a nomination.
No, being study committee clerk is enough work for me, so...
Everybody's looking at Michael.
I know, 'cause he's the new guy. Set bullseye on him.
Welcome, welcome.
That's a dino bird.
We, we were going down a different path, so I'd like to have some discussion about that first.
So, yes, so we can talk about that for a second. So, previously, we've had the chair, the vice chair, and a clerk, but then for a few blissful years, we had someone who took notes. So, the idea is that we will go forward with finding someone to take notes, so the clerk would just be the clerk.
Yep.
But until we find a person, well, we have been kind of taking turns taking notes, but it's kind of, it doesn't necessarily mean that the clerk has to take notes every time. Well, hopefully, we will have a person to do the note-taking.
But where, where are we at, though? Last meeting, we, we, people were gonna be talking.
Yeah, people are gonna be talking.
I don't, there were several people who are at the table. Did anybody make any progress?
No.
Did we ask anybody in, in the school or is it?
No.
I know it's, I know it's good.
Jen Martin, I maybe put it in the, um, in the bulletin, maybe?
You must have a broadcast email, right? You can just broadcast it out to every employee.
I am looking for a clerk. Your school board is looking for a clerk.
What about the, we also, there was an idea of, um, there was another idea.
There was an idea of putting an ad in the paper. I talked to Barb at, um, central office and she suggested putting it, it out in our newsletter. And so, that can just go out next week.
We could, we could put it in the views. They have an issue coming up. Um, the deadline is the twenty-seventh. I'll ma- I can make sure that goes in the views.
There was also the, I thought somebody was gonna reach out to the, the new person on which board? There's a new note-taker somewhere. Is it the high school board or is it the...
I haven't heard of them.
Oh, I thought there was a...
Pardon my ignorance, where are you going right now, are you, are you like...
I'm taking the notes, but it's very hard to participate and take the notes, which might be a good chance for me.
Well, I would, I would...
We had someone for a while, it was nice.
Anybody here go to the high school meetings?
Yeah, and they were paid.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for me.
Nobody goes to high school?
Twenty dollars an hour.
It's new, right? Person's fairly new.
No, sure.
I didn't recognize it when I watched the show.
So, who's going after that person? I'm writing down action items here, so Joe Carroll will put it in the bulletin.
Amy's gonna put it in the other views.
The views, yep. Should we go forth and do a box out at the same time or should we wait to see? Oh.
Could we?
That's, that's what I'm feeling. They're expensive, yeah.
Usually you can get somebody to donate, a local business or something like, donate a box.
Sometimes the reformer will run it for free because it's a public service.
Okay, we'll try the views first and the newsletter. And we'll find out who the, I'll find out who the high school person is.
And maybe somebody watching this broadcast will say, "Yes."
I'd like to earn it.
What, what's the thing?
I don't wanna sit here at home alone.
I'm watching the TV.
For free, I thought it was seventy-five, I mean...
You're hired.
How much, well, we have, we have a budget of like a thousand for ninety-four?
Well, there's, I think there's a standard.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying, so it's seven, like seventy-five dollars, sounds about right at the rate that we're doing. So, it's helpful to say seventy-five dollars because, um, it's helpful to say seventy-five dollars if you're watching it anyway.
Okay, so who would like to nominate Michael?
I'm not gonna. He respectfully declined the nomination.
So, can we just go without an official clerk? We have for so long, so.
Hi, is there, yeah, I wonder is there a requirement for that?
I'm not sure, according to the, um, the school parent handbook, Dan, you're the clerk.
Maybe I don't know about that, or maybe I was, I was stripped of that a long time ago, I'd say.
Okay, so we'll table the clerk.
Assuming everybody does their due diligence in doing their action items, I will happily note take, what else does a clerk do then?
I'm not sure.
Until we find such a forementioned note taker.
Well, having been a former clerk, I know that you take the copy of the warrants and any other official documents and go into the closet and put it in a file. And I will have gladly do that for.
If it's too, if it's, if it's stepping over some weird statutory requirement, I'm happy to put it in the closet too, so.
That's, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and nominate Christine.
Well, she's already vice chair.
She's vice chair.
She can be vice.
But I will fulfill the obligations of clerk until such time as we can find a note taker, and since we haven't had one, I don't think they do all that much except for take the notes, so.
Yeah, just anything.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, we will revisit the official note taker at the next meeting, which comes up to agenda items for next meeting, I have, we'll talk about the solar issues, more forty-six updates and discussions, an update on our note taker, anything else?
Well, we really need to get back into the wood heat initiative.
Yeah.
Okay, wood heat initiative.
Yeah, it's gone a little quiet because Kim Smith left, right? She.
I think she did, yeah.
Yeah, I know she did, so it would be nice to sort of take stock where that is and make sure the money's still available to us if we want to pursue it.
It is a, from my perspective, it's, we've been at a standstill because we haven't gotten the information we asked for back in April, um, so, under other business, are we on other now?
Yes, we're on other now.
Um, I'd like the board to have a discussion about what would be an appropriate, um, expectation when we ask for some information, when we should get it, I don't know if anybody around the board feels.
What?
Feels, uh, or cares that we haven't gotten information that we've asked for.
What information do we need?
Oil for five years, and electric for five years.
Pretty sure I sent that out.
So, Dan didn't.
You're missing.
I thought we.
I get that, two, two.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm sure I sent that out, and I sent some.
It wasn't five years as well.
I'm missing a couple of years.
Yeah, it wasn't the five years.
Oh, sure, we can get you a couple of, couple of gaps, no, do you have the two years?
Yes, I said it.
And frankly, Frank, I'd like you to discuss this with the board, because this, I'm asking the board to discuss this amongst ourselves, the board asked for this.
Sure, glad to send it out.
The board didn't get it.
Yeah, glad to send it out.
It went to a, a public body other than the board.
Oh, no, I'm sure I copied it.
So, so let's, let the board, let's let the board discuss this, please, Frank, Frank, can the board discuss this, Frank?
Yeah, I copied it.
Yes.
Yeah, I ca, I copied Kate.
Can the board discuss this?
It's not my decision.
Then, then let us.
Yes, we'll discuss it.
So, I've been very upset that we asked for this information and we didn't get it, and I don't think that's a great way to have a relationship with the business office, and I would like the board to have some discussion about whether you feel that's okay for us to ask for something and not get it, or to have it go to somebody other than the board when we've asked for it, um, or for it to be incomplete, or for it to be ignored, and if you're all fine with it, then so be it, but I, I've been very disappointed in how things have been handled on this matter specifically, so I guess I, I'd like the rest of your input.
I do wanna make sure, folks, that I copied Kate as the board chair, and as far as I know, I fulfilled the board's request, so if there's, if there's a situation where the board is feeling like, you, you know, I haven't provided information, I'll, I assume you, you communicated that to the board, but, um, but, you know, obviously, it's important to me that, um, central office provides information when it's, uh, needed, and I, I'm quite certain that's been done.
Frank, once again, this was a discussion amongst the board, please.
Dan, you're, you're essentially accusing me of not responding to your request.
So you're not abiding by our wishes.
And I'm telling you that that's not correct.
Did you give what you were asked for?
I, I copied Kate the email, and I am happy to provide, if there's a gap in the data.
Were you asked, subsequent to what you gave out, were you asked for anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, at the end of August, when you were really busy, I emailed you and asked you to give us the two more years that.
Okay.
And you emailed me back with a long list of all the things we were really busy with, it could wait, so that was, yeah, and I do, when I was new to being the chairperson, because I'm used to emails going to everybody, um, Frank responded to the energy committee's request for the two years and, for how many years it was, and then I got that information, and then I didn't forward it to everybody, but then we talked about it at another meeting.
I, I got it too, but it came, it was the energy committee's request.
So, right. But it went to the energy committee, not to you, yeah.
When we had requested this in April and got nothing, but when the energy committee requested it, they got it, and that is very disappointing to me.
Right.
From my position, I, I assumed that when I copied Kate that it would go to, to all board members.
You're, you're missing my point, we requested it in April, we didn't get it until you followed up to the energies committee request, so that, so.
Yeah. And, and I'm sure that the two years of data that you're asking for would not hold up a thing as it relates to an energy audit, an assessment of opportunity, it, it is not a, a critical, I, I would assume William would attest to that as well, it's not an absolutely critical go or no-go, uh, component of a, of a project, but, um, as I say, I'm happy to, uh, look back at the gap in the years, and I will, I will make sure we get that. We do have our, our auditors in, we have hit all of our critical marks that fund the school, that comply with the state statutes, there are things that have a severe, uh, effect on the, all schools if we don't hit our targets at the central office, um, and we have met those, and, uh, as of actually today, the auditors are doing their fieldwork, we are prepared, um, and I can turn my attention to this tomorrow morning.
So, so to be, so to be clear, we want five years' worth of data, not just gaps, we want five years' worth of data, and also, the point is, I want the board still to talk about this rather than being disrupted. It's about what we asked for and what we get, and for you to, I have the floor, and for you to make assumptions about whether it's important or not, what we asked for, is alarming to me.
Dan, if you speak to me, I'm gonna respond to you.
No, I'm not done, I'm not done, Frank.
And that doesn't matter, if you are going to start to essentially attempt to demean my work, I will respond.
It doesn't matter.
I, I'd like.
I'm not, I'm not done, Chair.
I would like to say something.
Hold on.
So, maybe.
I haven't finished my point.
So, Dan, I get, I understand, but I also see what's happening is that you're asking Frank not to speak, but yet you're speaking to him and he's not letting him respond.
Then I'll look at you, my point is that for someone to say what's important and what's not important is a little arrogant, because that, that you don't know what was asked for, why I'm asking for it, and the board does know why I'm asking for it, because we've talked about how I met with the current provider here, who takes care of our HVAC, and that was their recommendation, that we as a board ask for that information so that they could help us evaluate the things that we need to evaluate, to make a decision on whether we, uh, what we need to do going forward, and whether this wood heat initiative is something that we need to consider, I mean, not we should consider it, but whether it's the appropriate, uh, thing for us to consider. So, I did not make the request up, it was requested of me, therefore, I find that it's important enough that we should get that information.
So, let's stop escalating everything and just, you asked if the board felt that we should have a time limit for requests to be answered from the central office, so, let's just stick with that, Amy.
Um, I just wanted to, maybe clarification of the process would help, so, um, and that might alleviate some of, you know, concerns, but usually, the requests go to the board chair, the board chair follows up on it, this is my understanding of it, and then, um, the business manager or the superintendent gets the information back to the chair, and then it is disseminated, um, I know that a lot of times, um, Frank's predecessor would, uh, Jim Kane would, you know, directly give this stuff to like the energy committee, so, you know, you're probably following the precedent there, and, um, yeah, so, I, I, I think maybe clarity of the process would be good and, um, might alleviate any future, you know, hard feelings, and, you know, in my personal experience of dealing with central office for thirteen years and a number of different boards, I've found them to be nothing but accommodating, um, and, you know, it's like all things in life, if, if you take an adversarial tone, you're gonna, it, it doesn't propel towards any type of answers or solutions, so, you know, if we can all maybe step back and look at the bigger picture and realize that we're looking for answers, and we'll get them, so.
So, I'd like.
So.
Is that the process that we think we're gonna use going forward, is that the chair will approach the, will approach the central office, is that what we're, I'm, well, I'm asking, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
We don't have a policy about that.
Well, this particular thing was adva, asked in a meeting a while ago, and so.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
But.
It's kind of like, then, what was it, what was it a meeting, then?
Things fall through the cracks, don't, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm coming in relatively clean to this, so here's my take, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a way that we could get together on how we're gonna do it moving forward?
Yeah.
And what would that look like, what do people think?
So, I think that's, that's fine, I mean, if the last one comes in, I give it to Frank, Frank gets it back to me, yeah.
I mean, I'd even take your, but from Frank on whether it's easier to just deal directly with the chair of a board than it is with the various different members of a board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that is important in that, um, we, we want all board members to have the same.
You know. So that there's clear communication, I'm sorry to interrupt, speak over you, but, you know, so that there's clarity of how we're gonna approach you and, and what we would expect coming back.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right, right.
So, it's part of that clarity, it's part of that clarity, I'd like to have a, an, an agreement as to how long is, is acceptable or not acceptable, and, and for clarification, we did go through the board chair way back in April, when that was Christina, I believe.
Right.
So, what do you guys feel about a time?
Well, there's, what about the public records law, just go with that timeframe? Because if I ask for, if I ask for information as a public citizen, it would be provided to me, I think it's four days, or it's, it's a number of days. And so, I don't think that, uh, an ele, my elected representative, I think, uh, should not be required to have board consensus to request information that any public citizen can have, so if, if it's information that I could obtain by writing to Frank and requesting a public record, what are all of the expenditures for my school for X, Y, and Z? And if he's required by law to provide it to nobody, I'm nobody, in a certain number of days, why should it, why should it take more or less time, uh, for the board? Um, I also, I've been frustrated myself, um, because I've watched, uh, Dan request various pieces of information from central office, and, um, it shouldn't have to become a point of contention, um, it's information that my elected representatives need to do their jobs, so I, I would love to see the board come to a resolution that maybe, uh, that tracks the timeline that's required by Vermont law, uh, things are supposed to be turned over to a regular person in a certain number of days, um, I would think that it would be something that you could get maybe even sooner, if you're a board member with a duty to taxpayers.
Thank you, Dan. That, that sounds reasonable, that's a good. If, the only issue, potential issue I see is that if the information is, is not easily, easel, easily accessed, you know, if it's like one of those little subtle things that you're gonna have to really dig down deep into the data, I mean, electricity and oil, that's pretty cut and dried because it's a line item in the budget, so, but, you know, other, you know, like if we wanted to get.
The account number which you keep, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, but yeah, I think, I don't think we need to have any formal thing when it's already a zynist.
It's already a law.
Yeah, so.
Well, if we agree to follow that.
That we would be able to say if you were hitting an August fifteenth deadline for the state where reports are a hundred dollars a day if they're not submitted, that we could say, can we extend that? And what I remember from that back in April was some clarity on whether information would come from individual board members directly to Frank, or was information coming as a board to Frank, or was it coming from, you know, somebody outside of the board completely to Frank, and each party feeling that they had individual ideas of how that response was supposed to come back to them, which wasn't necessarily everybody else's understanding, so what you're looking for now is information from the board, from Frank.
My concern is the timely response.
And I also thought I gave the chance.
So, I think we can, I mean, I think the four days, because that's public record, it, that's.
I'd be ecstatic with that, I, I would go longer, but if you want to read it four days, I'm not.
It does seem very short, but.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's reasonable.
But it's a, I mean, that was just my idea, what do you all think?
Well, technically, in the public records act law, you, if it is complicated, you're allowed to, to respond to the party to say, listen, this is really complicated, we don't have a way to access it, we need to redact some information, having done that in the past with other clients, I know that that's absolutely the way that you do it, but I think, um, that that idea of a timeline is, is a good idea, but the response is often critical, that feels like, you know, there's a tension given to the request, whether it could be fulfilled that, that moment or not.
Why, well, I, I feel like I've done very much in here, we've had this issue at some other boards, and it becomes an issue when individual board members are requesting information for their own information, or because it would be interesting if I knew this, um, which is one of the reasons why we do ask that if you're asking for information, is it for the board to make some sort of decision or have information to move forward on something, but I'll just use you as an, an example, I wonder what all of the eighth graders scored on S-Back when they got to eleventh grade, because I've got a kid that's gonna be in eleventh grade next year.
Yeah.
That is not an appropriate request to be made, so you really need to be thinking about, why are, why am I asking for this information? Am I part of a subcommittee with the board, I need this information for our subcommittee, that's appropriate, but you need to think hard about what it is that you're asking, because we are, we're, we're working for all the boards, not just.
Yeah. But maybe, maybe as, you know, we put down maybe a solution to this too, is in addition to agenda items, for the next meeting, we make information requests, a list of information requests so that we have that, and can follow up on it for clarity.
I think that's a little restrictive, especially if we only meet once a month, I mean, I think if we're going to get into restrictive policy, all I want to do is talk about timeliness, um, if we're going to have a, a, a policy discussion, then you go through the board chair, that should, that should be appropriate, um.
Well, I think, I, I, I don't think it's really restrictive to have Katie be the one who's following up on stuff and doing that, okay.
No, that's what I said, I, I think saying that it has to be done at a meeting and put on, you know, maybe.
No, it, I don't think it would have to be done in a meeting, it would just be on the agenda, so we could just revisit it, okay, we got this, or, yes, this is.
Yeah.
Like a standing. I thought you meant like we hadn't requested it at a meeting.
No, no.
No, it's just, it's making, it's making sure.
Hold on, that's great, old business, it ought to be, yeah.
It's making sure things don't fall through the cracks.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we've had that, we've had this discussion before as a board, that we don't, it's not the board, it's like, it is not, uh,
Yeah, between C and D.
Yes.
Yep.
C plus.
Appropriate for board, for board members to be making those requests, we understand you're busy, we hope you're spending your time making the schools work, and, and that's our goal as well, so it's,
C point one.
And this was a request made by the full board at several board meetings, so.
Good.
Okay.
Question.
Yes, I would.
What if not everybody on the board wants this information, let's say one board member wants to present an idea to the board and needs data from central office to make the proposal, it seems strange that, uh, a whole board would have to agree on something that one board member would wanna propose, I just think, if, I, I, you know, I just think that if a board member is trying to do his or her job and get information about something that they want to present to the board or to respond to some kind of board need, um, it shouldn't have to be filtered necessarily through one person, it's more efficient, that might be the preferred way, but it shouldn't be the exclusive way, um, I don't know, let, let's say Michael wants to propose something to the board at the next meeting, uh, regarding the wood burning initiative, and, uh, he's gonna propose it to everyone, but he needs information from Frank to be able to make an intelligent argument. Uh, why shouldn't Michael be able to request information directly from Frank without having to have a whole board approve it? or have it filtered through someone who may disagree with the idea?
I, I don't think that was the, that was our, was not our intent.
The idea?
No, there's never, never the idea, because it was just for clarity of communication, so that there's typically one point person that was, that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's not the intent.
Oh, all right, okay, then I, I misunderstood.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
If I'm incorrect in my understanding, there would be typically one point person. And I know how to request things under the public records act too, so, we always do that if that, that's it.
I know, that's a crazy question.
And if I could just add that, from the central office point of view, certainly my own point of view, you know, we absolutely want to, um, uh, respond to board requests and we wanna support the board's work. We wanna make a successful school system, um, and, uh, generally as we work together, you know, I'm still, uh, relatively new, far from a thirty-five year track record of my predecessor. So that, it does take time to absorb, uh, the, the learning and the, and the, um, response that goes with that. But, um, uh, my point is, is that, uh, as we get to know each other better, you will understand the capacity of the, uh, central office and what is, what is realistic and, and what is not. Of course, um, when you're dealing with, with a, uh, an employee who's been in a system for thirty-five years, so much of the data is, is very readily available. When you're dealing with a new person, um, the data is not readily available. And the learning curve is steep, uh, in school finance and central office work. So, um, I, I, I'll just, just reassure you, my goal is to be responsive and to very much support the board's work. And, uh, and I think you'll, you'll find that, um, there will be a good trend, a good trajectory in that, uh, regard. But, but you'll also know that what, you'll understand what's reasonable, given the resources the central office has to work with. And, and I'm, I'm sure nobody wants to put anybody in a position, um, to, uh, you know, set something up for failure. But, uh, and that, that simply means that there, there are deadlines that have huge ramifications. Tax rates will not go out to, uh, the town offices, uh, cash flow won't be available to cover payroll, bid projects that have to be done by opening of school, you know. Those, those sorts of things are all the confluence that hits in the summer and there's the same staff available, um, to get that worked out. So it, there are, there are, there are things that, um, make it difficult to be, uh, responsive as quickly as we'd allow, like, but we'll get there.
And you are adding a new central staff to your group.
We do expect to have somebody, um, by October, I mean, unfortunately, there's no space in the central office to put a new person, so that's-
Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Oh, that issue.
So much for, so much for costs going down.
I have a skinny one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I'm going to propose that we meet on October eleventh and not meet in two weeks.
That would be lovely.
How does everyone feel about that? Doesn't seem like there's a whole lot going on, so that we-
Um, we actually-
October eleventh, the holiday?
Study-
Is there October eleven?
No, excuse me.
No, that's, uh, the study committee is tentatively scheduled to be here.
My next, uh-
Have that's meeting here, and there's also an SU meetings planned for here that night too, according to my calendar, so.
On our meeting day. But the second two days are night, why is it?
Yeah, I know, but it would all be happening here.
Dubtale.
Yeah, it would all be dovetailed with this meeting, so we might want to, um, you might want to talk with central office about time.
How's the SU being dovetailed with the study committee, one before the other?
I think we may have decided to put off the SU meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. SU meeting, okay, yeah.
Okay.
If we go with the stud-, if we go with a forum, there wouldn't be time for both of them.
Yeah. Yeah. So it might be something-
What time is the study committee tentatively planned?
Well, we always, we always, well, if it's a forum, it could be seven to eight, but if it's an actual meeting, then it would be a little longer, six to eight, but.
That doesn't give us a whole lot of time.
No, so, but we could, yeah. I mean, I, we have a, like, like I said, we have another one coming up on the twenty, me, study committee work session on the twenty-second and we can always propose a different time. I think people were, the original plan was to try and dovetail with local meetings, you know, so, starting in October.
But would that, are you suggesting that that can change now that there's no official-
No, this was, this was set, um, at our last meeting after we had decided to push back the vote, so.
No, I mean, the idea with dovetailing the meetings, because you were gonna go around and do forums, it sounds like, so if that's not happening, would it be?
We push back the first forum, the first two forums, maybe?
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the first one would be, um, Monday, October third at Guilford, that's what is tentatively scheduled right now.
And the next one was the eleventh?
And then we, and then we did the eleventh because we knew that was a Dummerston meeting and then we were gonna cycle through the other boards.
Right, so if you have one, if you meet on the third, can we get it off of our schedule because we're not, you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have the forums now, right?
No, we still are having the first.
Yeah, they, yes.
Oh, you're still doing it even though we don't have an approved articles of incorporation?
Well, we might.
That is kinda the question, I mean, we pushed it off because we were, we were sure we wouldn't have it by the twen-, you're pretty sure it wouldn't be done by the twenty-second.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we pushed off the first couple so that we would have the, some document theoretically that we're working from, but it's very possible we won't.
Yeah.
Well, especially if it has to come back to each board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Well.
It's changing our meeting, I guess.
Is it possible to change the eleventh?
Yeah.
Anything's possible.
Yeah, for the study committee.
Change the eleventh for this study committee.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure. So, let's go forth that we will have our meeting on the eleventh. Um, and then-
Six thirty, usual time?
Six thirty, usual time. And if it turns out that you guys are gonna meet at seven, maybe we could change the time to six and then, does that sound fair?
Sounds good, okay.
So, we're going with the eleventh at six thirty unless you hear otherwise from me.
Okay.
Oop.
I have to make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, I have, well, I think under other, um, well, when we left the last meeting, Ron presented the end of year, I believe.
Oh. Yeah.
But wasn't able to answer some questions and was supposed to let Frank know that we wanted to talk about it tonight, I don't know if he did that, Frank?
What's the issue?
Did Ron mention to you that when you came to the next meeting to be prepared to talk about the end of year numbers because he couldn't answer the questions?
Sure, I'm glad to speak to the-
It was in the minutes.
It was in the minutes, it was something about special education, it's on the left.
Well, it was also fund balance, there were several questions.
Sure.
Ron reviewed fund balances and current deficit and the difference between intensive SVEs, but ed, and extra serv, but ed. And the disconnect between the budgets, to be clarified when Frank attends the next meeting.
Okay, which one, which one do you wanna start with?
Do you want the end one? Yeah.
The fund balance.
Fund balance, okay, what would you like to know? We, we have a twenty-two thousand dollars, seven, twenty-two thousand seven forty-four is the beginning fund balance and-
Can you tell us where you're looking, please?
Okay, so you have a balance sheet?
On page one.
First page.
Which line is it?
Uh, fund balance would always be at the bottom of the balance sheet.
And for what year is this? This is FY sixteen?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So what was your, your question?
Ron was trying to say that we owe forty-something thousand dollars and so we were confused about that because we thought we actually put that into FY seventeen budget, therefore, we wouldn't actually have a ba-, a balance of forty thousand.
Right, so- So as of June thirtieth, you know, s-, two thousand sixteen, uh, FY seventeen hasn't happened yet.
Correct.
So, um, we, we knew that we had this deficit of twenty-two thousand seven forty-four, that's the beginning fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the fiscal year results of, um, the year ending June two thousand sixteen was a, a loss of twenty thousand four forty-seven. You see that on bottom of the page.
Which page?
Oh, one year, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you add the beginning fund balance with the additional loss, it's a forty-three thousand one ninety-two, that's the total of those two numbers.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So that's our, our current fund balance, um, as of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. And then, yes, you're correct that, um, we, we knew we had that deficit, uh, when we did the FY seventeen budget and we budgeted that exact amount in the, in the proposed budget, um, as a deficit reduction. So the twenty-two seven forty-four is resolved, um, as of the fiscal year seventeen budget. And then the, uh, the total income loss of twenty thousand four forty-seven, um, uh, we, we know that you have a reserve in legal, um, for more than that, so if you don't use that, uh, that would, uh, cover that balance as well.
So, so the takeaway I'm looking for is what is our, rolling over right now, twenty thousand four forty-seven, forty-eight?
Current fund balance is the cumulative total of beginning plus year-to-date, which is forty-three thousand one ninety-two.
Well, when do you pay off, since we put it in the budget and FY seventeen to pay off the prior year's overage, when do you consider that?
So the tax rate that will be going out, or maybe you've already gotten your taxes, um, but the taxes, the tax bills that are going out now,
Well, they're already gone.
um, are collecting enough money, you know, that's gonna fund the fiscal year seventeen budget, which includes a line item of twenty-two thousand to fund that.
So when do you make that bookkeeping entry?
There's, there's no bookkeeping entry, it's the difference between revenues and expenses. We'll, um, do the same thing that you see every year in a financial statement. The difference between revenues and expenses in the year is the income or loss.
I understand that.
That updates your, your beginning fund balance.
But I'm asking about the fund balance. So right now, you're saying that we are, we have a balance of forty-two thousand, when do you correct that? Because in this year's budget, we paid for that prior balance.
Well, you, you, we can look at a balance sheet every, at, at any point in the year and it would be June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, a year from now, when all the taxes have been collected, um, and all bills have been paid, that you would evaluate whether or not we were on plan and, uh, you know, essentially, uh, paid off the twenty thousand four forty-seven, or-
No, the twenty-two seven forty-four is what I'm asking about.
Yeah, that as well, yeah.
Yep.
Or were there new variances that, you know, with, with any budget, um, you tend to have?
So you're saying that throughout the whole year, you carry that fund balance even though it's been paid off for budget?
Every day a balance sheet is updated, so every day-
Okay, so if we saw something again, we wouldn't see that twenty, twenty-two four forty-eight?
Well, the twenty-two four, uh-
Seven forty-four.
Twenty-two, um, uh, seven forty-four is the beginning fund balance, um-
And FY sixteen.
For FY sixteen and as of July first, when we run a balance sheet, um, your beginning fund balance is gonna be forty-three one forty-two.
Because the taxes haven't been collected yet. So I'm asking, when does that twenty, two thousand seven forty-four come off the balance sheet?
July first.
Twenty seventeen.
No, the next day, the next day of our fiscal year.
So if you ran a balance sheet now, we would only show fund balance of twenty thousand four forty-seven?
Mm-hmm. Your be- No, your beginning fund balance is gonna be forty-three one forty-two. And you will run a surplus of twenty-two thousand in fiscal year seventeen that will pay half of it off. And if you run a surplus on your legal reserve, it'll pay the balance off. And that will all occur over the course of the fiscal year.
I guess the problem is the column says year-to-date, so that's what's throwing things off.
Year-to-date, as, as of June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
But if you ran it July first, year-to-date, it would be what number?
It, you, you're gonna roll all of your, um, ending fund balances in one fiscal year into the new fiscal year
Right.
and the new balance is going to be, um, forty-three thousand one ninety-two. But as you know, a balance sheet changes every day, every time you-
But you're saying that's not gonna change for the whole year?
Every time you run a payroll, every time you cut a check for a disbursements, every time you deposit money, cash changes, liabilities change, fund balance changes.
Okay.
Why do you call it fund balance?
I don't call it fund balance.
It just starts out not making sense.
Yeah, no, that's, this is, um, um, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has dramatically changed the standard reports for schools in audits. But, uh, school boards have held on to a budgetary fund basis format of accounting for years and years in Vermont. Two thousand four, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board said, school districts will report the same format that, uh, the rest of the, uh, private industry reports, public entities. So, a balance sheet, if you look at your audit report, you will see that there are also fixed assets and there are also, uh, accumulated appreciation entries. There is also the bond indebtedness, if you had any, Dummerston does not have, uh, the building bond. But, but the budgetary basis, uh, fund accounting, um, does not include some of those things. But, but we do, we do manage that, um, data and it is in our, uh, audit reports.
Christina, what were the other questions?
The other one was intensive SVE, SPEB, and the EXTRSERV, SPEB.
So you're talking about revenues. Do you remember the context?
It was intensive, yeah.
What do they mean and where do they go?
There we go.
What do those things mean?
Okay, so you're, you're talking about revenues, so I think you're on, uh, page one of the revenue and expense statement. So, um, from the handout, you flip, uh, one, two pages and you're onto a statement that looks like this. That's the revenue statement, um, for the general operating fund.
I see.
And, okay.
Yeah, so we didn't know what the, what those, the differences were between those.
And you're looking for- Okay, so, um, you're talking about, um, state aid and, um, the code thirty-two oh two over there on the left-hand side, the account code, that's a prescribed code by the state of Vermont. Intensive services, special ed, uh, aid, what, that's the, um, aid from the state of Vermont based on school funding formula, um, that is, um, a reimbursement for spending special ed, um, services, spending money on special ed services. Uh, the next line down is, uh, the code thirty-two oh three, again, that's a state prescribed code and that's extraordinary, uh, services, special ed reimbursement. And that, that is based on, um, a certain, again, funding formula.
And so these things are not easy to budget for?
Uh, they are dependent on spending, so spending varies from, um, from the plan and, uh, revenue will vary as well. And, uh, yes, typically, I mean, Joe Carroll has a very good sense of that, it's, there, there is, um, not unusual for, um, certain, um, families with, um, special needs students to be not, not necessarily predictable. To some extent, that is, but in terms of if a family moves in, um, uh, public school, as you know, will accept all students and, uh, will incur those costs that go with an individual education plan, i.e.-
I guess when I'm trying to figure, sorry.
Does this cover the really expensive students?
So the extraordinary aid is for students that cost the district more than fifty thousand.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Which is extraordinary service, special ed.
Yes.
Right.
So that gets billed, that revenue comes back and it's just in a percentage that it does, under fifty thousand.
That's right, that's right. That's right.
That's the thirteen thousand.
So if we had a student that needed to go to Crouched Mountain, then they, they would fall in the lap, that classification, okay.
That's right.
So it's the, it's the rates of reimbursement that differ between the thirty-two oh two and the thirty-two oh three?
Yeah, every dollar spent, in addition to over fifty thousand dollars for extraordinary, is reimbursed at ninety percent from the state. Of course, it has to be eligible costs, all of this is eligible costs and there's a good deal of work that, um, goes into assuring those are eligible costs. Intensive services reimbursement is, uh, generally reimbursed at about fifty-six percent and that is on every eligible dollar.
I guess my question is about budgeting. So, when we meet in December, Joe Carroll works with you to come up with a number based on projections. And so, if something changes during the course of the year, the range to date column, which I guess is really receivables or- which I guess is really receivables or income.
Range-to-date would be the current month and then year-to-date is the twelve months, unless in this case, we've just made one report because the year is over and we've made all references to year-to-date so that the budget variance column is easy to read.
Okay, so the variances are just what you'd expect from normal?
Can I try this one? Can I try?
I love it.
I would love to be able to say. Special ed revenue is based on what I project our special education students, where they're placed and what services they're getting.
Yes, and the costs of that, yeah.
Throughout the year, those kids, some kids may move, which means that revenue wouldn't come back that we had anticipated getting. Some kids, special education services, that I would consider a special ed service, might not be considered a special ed service by some audit time study.
So, non-reimbursable.
It would be non-reimbursable.
Non-qualified.
So, when those two things happen, the student moves, we don't get that reimbursement or something's not reimbursable, we don't get it.
Right.
It shows up in this column.
That's right.
And when it has, so we're eleven thousand dollars less billable special education services.
Well, not just, not just a special ed, but you are focusing on the total number. The grand total variance is eleven thousand dollars on your three-point-two-four-five-million-dollar budget or a variance of three tenths of one percent. So, this is a very good budget in terms of being close to the plan. Less, less than one percent, you know, one-third of one percent variance. Joe Carroll, you're, you're essentially right, but I'm just clarifying that the, the total budget variance is eleven thousand on that entire Dummerston revenue plan, but the special ed is a variance of the ten thousand intensive and then thirteen thousand.
So, you received twenty-six hundred dollars and more than you budgeted?
That's right, which is remarkably close.
You're awesome.
That's just-
Yeah, were there any other questions?
I'd make a motion to adjourn. Anybody wanna? Is Joe fine?
Seconded by Christina Miller.
In favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Welcome, Michael.